But as I mentioned in our last meeting for our community, our type of vendor that we have city for is really the best fit at this point. Um, this will basically give us four years to make our decision on what we're going to do next. And so I saw that Charlie was here. Alan, we found out shortly earlier that um Autumn wanted so they can wait until we decide. So you're welcome to listen for the whole thing, but just to kind of save you some time and I I told Danny I would do the same thing and he's built up too that we were trying to move towards if not, so. Um, but we're excited. It was it was a um Brad's online, but Kay was there. Yeah, it was a good, good meeting between the city um and county. Uh, it'd be nice if we could meet with them more. So it's nice to work together on something. So we will start with the Casa grant one request.
My name's Connie Gill. I'm from Stark County Casa Program. I'm the director. Every year, as you know, we are court appointed special advocates. Um, every year we get a matching grant from the state that's matched by the county. Um, I've kind of given you a packet that shows on the back few pages, it shows what our grants have been for this year, what they're asked, uh, what they're giving us this year from the state, which is thirty two thousand, which is double what we normally get. Um, the pages behind that show in concession, um, what we've gotten in previous years prior to that. The reason for the jump this year is last, we go off the last year's numbers. Last year we had a hundred and thirty four cases come through our courts. Of those cases, um, yes, our volunteer program, but we have to have a full-time staff to oversee all of those cases. To file reports, to um attend court, to um train new Casa members, to train existing Casa members. They have to have a certain amount of hours every year. Um, the first few pages where it says like two thousand one on the second page, those are the number of here of cases that we have. There's chins right below that where it says one thirty four. Those are the number of cases that we've had um in the years leading up to the last two years. Hundred and six or the year before that and so on and so forth. This year so far, we've added to our hundred and thirty six cases. We've added forty two cases already this year. But we started this year with a hundred and thirty four cases and so far we've added forty two. That's just of today. So um unfortunately our cases are going up and somebody has to oversee those. Um, we are now a profit, but we pay rent and utilities and I myself get paid for twenty five hours a week. Um, I usually work somewhere between forty and fifty hours a week to oversee these cases. We've had so many things happening, counties that are surrounding ours. Um, that I we're here to make sure that doesn't happen in this community. We don't want any children to fall through the cracks. Um, so we are asking that you will match the grant state is offering us for this year, which is um thirty two thousand nine hundred and fifty two dollars.
Prepared their budget and they put in thirteen thousand dollars in their budget for what it's normally then, but this is just above and beyond what's already been budgeted for twenty twenty three.
If we pay something above and beyond for twenty twenty two?
No.
I mean, I like, when, when did you guys find out about this?
Um, we found out, I got the email for this about two, three weeks ago. I and I went to Rachel and I
Wait till November to
Right, and I
Thirty thousand, I'm thinking it was three thousand I heard, oh, you know, but I mean thirty two thousand is a lot of money to finish with like
And I understand that.
Forty two cases. That's thirty percent more cases roughly. But the operating budget is thirty two thousand more. Um, I I guess I just don't really understand, like, what, what's the, what's the thirty two thousand increase? Like, what does that?
Um, that's what the state, the state goes off the number of cases that um a county has. Like I said, we came into the year with a hundred and thirty four cases and we've added forty two so far. Um are everybody else, I guess, who states cases have gone. I have a page from the state where they sent us what are um, what our grant numbers are for this year. And I, like I said, they base them off of the number of kids. For every kid that you, for every child that you have a case on, you can only supervise a certain number of them without increasing the staff that you have in your office. Um, because it's not safe, I believe in their eyes, for one person to oversee a hundred and thirty four cases. In this case, a hundred and seventy some cases at this point.
So all these cases are Stark County?
Yes, all of these are Stark, Stark County cases. And I printed them out. You can look at them on here. This is just Stark County. All of the first few pages, the numbers come straight from the Stark County court side. Um, page one, it says to uh twenty twenty one. The second page, if you go to chins, that number right there, a hundred and thirty four at the bottom, that's just from Stark County.
So they talk about fifteen percent of uh in-kind matching funds. Like, what could those be? What can these in-kind funds be?
Um, it could be um being able to use the boardroom for our trainings. Um, it maybe bar, using this room um in being able to print stuff off at the courthouse as opposed to us paying for all those supplies. We play, it, things like that. Um.
So last year it was thirteen thousand one eighty one and the judge's budget came up with that. What is the judge's budget coming up with this year out of thirty two thousand nine fifty two?
Well, since they already budgeted for twenty twenty three, it's the same amount as this year. Because it's never really increased.
That's what I'm getting at. So thirteen thousand, I have to still come off of thirty two thousand. So they have nineteen, nineteen something.
What was the matching?
Nineteen one forty two.
What was our grant last year that we received?
Our matching grant that we received um last year was thirteen, it's the extra page that I gave you, thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty one.
Okay.
The year prior to that, it was, I believe, sixteen uh man, I thought it was sixteen. Yeah, fifteen, six, eighty four, and then prior to that
The judge came up with all of it then too?
Yeah, he kind of moved it when it's just that little bit.
I was gonna say, I just don't remember us having to come up with a chunk like that. Only like something this big, we would like figure out a way of budget for it.
When our COVID hit, when everything happened with COVID, our cases started to increase a lot in this county. Um, as I don't know if it was because kids were at home and schooling and but our cases started going up exponentially once COVID hit. And they've continued to rise since then.
A drastic increase in the, in, in your case, in your cases. And and you're, and you're saying that a possibility that could be some of it in because of COVID.
Yes.
Would our, our, was part of our ARPA funds work for that?
Well, I mean, lost revenue was coming to mind for me, but um
What happened next? I mean, the situation, I'd like to
Plan better for next year. I mean, it's a thirty percent increase in it's a case, but it's a hundred and twenty five percent increase in what they're making us up with.
This is the catch point too, we get in all time.
The state does this to it. That's not your fault.
And I do apologize. I wish I could have brought it to you sooner.
Yeah, right. And I, I, you know, in today's meeting, the commissioners had expressed a lot of dissatisfaction for utilizing the ARPA funds up to this point for things, so. Um, but that would be my recommendation that would come from lost revenue, like nineteen thousand, what was the case?
I do know that, as I said, um, during Casa or during COVID, our cases have gone up. Um, people staying home or people and losing work.
So what, what, here's, here's what I would ask for from you though, cooperation with us. I mean, that's, that's just a huge unplanned, you know, expense for us. I mean, wha- what I would hope is next year, since there's a cha- a chance for fifteen percent in-kind matching funds, that you would contact us and we would sit down and say, okay, how can we get rid of fifteen percent of that? And that would, you know, that would, you know, drive it down to, you know, another four thousand dollars, you know, I mean.
Yes, I, I have no problem doing that. And I've also spoken with state to um get the numbers earlier in the year. So that we, it won't be a, okay, we just found this out.
Well, I'm gonna ask a stupid question because I don't know the answer. Um, is there any carryover money at all from CASA or is it all gone?
Um, we have, but we actually have things that we um are planning on spending that on. We have it kind of earmarked for.
How do you know the answer to those questions?
I know I do.
Yeah, like
I do, but I want to hear, I want to hear the answer.
We, um right now we have a huge waiting list of kids that don't have CASA. So we're trying to recruit new people. We've been saving um for a while to get a sign on thirty, uh billboard on thirty where there's more traffic, where we haven't just reached just the people in the community. More people might see it.
Oh, I, I don't think anybody questions your mission or the purpose and we all believe, I think everybody knows what CASA is. We totally believe in it. We just you know, the state gives us a very small pot of money to work with. And when they surprise us with things like this, it's extremely painful for the other things that we need to get done, but um, we may as well not beat that horse to death if somebody's willing to make a motion um and from the lost revenue funds and then we're gonna hopefully plan better for this next year.
So moved.
I have a motion from Brad. Is there a second?
Can you make one on?
You can't make one on Zoom, right?
You got it. You guys pass the ordinance along to do that. You've not.
Thought we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, okay, good. Did you have a second?
Yep.
Oh, okay, that we have a motion and a second. Was there any further discussion? I'll ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? I have nothing else.
Thank you very much.
You guys all have heard about the new machine or the new cases with the BB pads that are going to be filtering in, in twenty three because they gotta be in use in twenty four. Um, that's the setup that we're looking at right there. Uh, it's got the BB pad where they don't have to lift it up to put it on top of the machine. It's all in one case, so.
They're just paying for all of it, right?
Um, the state's paying for the BB pads, one for each machine and the cases, yes.
Looks stable.
I feel like it's more stable than the legs that we have on the machines now.
Yeah, I mean, the old machines, we used to have a relink.
And the legs are on the outside, so you'll, uh, when we deliver the equipment, we'll be able to set it up and not just lay them on the floor or stack them on the floor the night before, so. Um, I'm excited to get those, even though it's gonna take more room for storage. Um, as we're going from a suitcase sized uh two foot by one foot by, what is it, forty four, forty six?
Yeah. Takes two square feet. The floor space to stack them up like soldiers.
And we can, and if I lay on flat, I can only do four tall.
Four, about high as I go, yeah.
So maybe looking for some new storage space or extra storage space, we'll see. I haven't get the, get the drawing of the machine room yet to figure out how many we can actually get in there. So, but uh, what about this election? We got seventeen thousand six hundred and forty seven registered voters in the county. Um, on election day, we voted four thousand nine hundred and seventy four. And that means that the walk-ins were seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty three. We had a voter turnout of forty point thirty percent. Um, a little lower than I was anticipating, but still not too bad. Better than most in the state. And of course, worse than others, but that's okay. Um, we didn't have any major malfunctions or issues on election day. It all went fairly smooth, except for some higher wait times than I would have liked to see. Um, I know I had one vote center that had almost a two-hour wait period, almost all day long. Um I would like the council to think about maybe purchasing a few more machines to help offset some of the longer wait times. Um, you know, when we bought the machines in two thousand, our uh voter registration wasn't near as high as what it is today, so.
We've bought some voter machines though, that they were supposed to move when that happened. Does it not have those this year?
I have forty six machines total. One is a demo machine. So I only have forty five machines that I can put out total in the entire county.
I just, I thought we had something that we set up though, that if that happened, you took some from one, you took them to another, or something, if you saw a surge like that, you weren't able to do that at all.
Not this time. But um I, I would not be opposed to that and a couple more poll books, so I could check in more people because there was empty machines at uh, two of the vote centers because it wasn't able to check in with the poll pads to get through and the battery issues with the poll pads lasting for the twelve hours. I'm uh working with MicroVote to see what we can do to um fix those issues, but having a few extras with their voter registration numbers coming up is naturally a bad thing, you know. In two thousand, we had uh, just a little over four thousand registered voters when we bought these machines and now we're over seventeen. We're gonna be pushing eighteen by the time we get to twenty twenty four. So, you know, it's the more registered voters you have, the more people you get out to vote, the
You went from four thousand to seventeen thousand in two years?
Twenty two years.
You bought the MicroVote machines in two thousand, actually ninety nine is when the contract is running. So something to think about, you, you know, wait times.
Bring in some numbers.
Well, the uh, the, the complete setup is like forty two hundred bucks. But the um, you might be in a better spot depending on what you choose to do with the older equipment versus the new. For instance, you can see there's a new panel that's been developed that's available, but it doesn't mean that your old equipment isn't just fine, because you guys reinvested in the upgrade of that equipment about eight years ago, uh, six years ago. And um, which we were forecasting a ten-year extension of life at that point in time. I mean, you're fine there and you're set. We do have some counties that are moving towards the newer panel, phasing out the other one. So if that happens, then I should be able to
Have used available.
Purposes of, yeah.
And how many do you find a good, ideally, how many do you think we can?
I would, I would like to see eight more machines and four more, four more poll pads is what I would ideally like to see.
How much were the poll pads?
Those are about, uh, the, the whole setup is about fifteen hundred bucks. That price add.
And like thirty thousand dollars. We need to see what, you know, the whole plan and the budget and all that kind of thing, because that's a lot of money. Especially if we might be able to get used or, you know.
I think we have a good, you know, because of next year's municipal elections, obviously we don't need that much equipment. We have a, a full calendar, we're prepared to see what the market does on the equipment. And then can roll that even for, to twenty twenty five.
Well, I mean, you know, we don't want to see too many of them sitting around. If you only had two sites that were slammed and you only need four machines, I don't, I don't see the reason to buy an eight. So that's why we need to see the platform first, you know, there's
Probably get it.
Yeah, let's, let's see. Let's do a needs assessment.
State doesn't kick in anything for the machines?
For the new ones?
Yeah.
I doubt it. We uh, I, the state's gonna be paying for the BB pads and the cases. I don't know if we buy used machines now, if they would do that with the, I don't know.
Or maybe you can help us with figuring out that, you know, if there was some repurposed and just how that mixes.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm almost certain there will be. It's the, the large change that any voting equipment that's bought from this from last year forward has to come with a BB pad. And so then the question would be um, the balance between, because the state, the state's purchase for the county was about twenty four hundred dollars per station. The BB pads are stupidly expensive because they're pretty much handmade. Uh, so the, that's where the bulk of the price would be.
Let's see, let's see. I mean, we want people to bail the vote. Um, speaking of storage though, did we ever get the upstairs cleaned up that you and I, you took me to see, and people committed?
Election time started and I have
But the others that were supposed to come get their stuff, have they done it?
I honestly, I haven't been up there since the election. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You guys might have quietly turned out among you. Oh, please do, yes. Uh, Matt from Court Facilities.
Good evening. My name is Matt Steffley. I'm the president of Court Facilities. So I uh, my entire career background is in facilities management and project administration. Um, I'm entering year five of um, having my own firm. I had a really good mentor that said every three years jump. And so I followed what he said, and so I learned from some of the biggest global firms ten different ways to do the same thing. And so I have learned from the best, I've seen what can be improved upon, what goes wrong, um, and kind of bundle that into my own niche firm. Um, I'm niched in the fact that I'm really um taking off throughout the state the last couple of years and seeing real, real crazy growth with the counties. Um, Indiana's ninety two counties, eighty six of them are small, um, such as yourself. They don't have the resources or um, the, the manpower or the skill set to do big projects. So the smaller counties find themselves um, using external contractors, engineers, architects for projects. So that's kind of where I found a huge need and fill a huge role. It doesn't exist. No one's really doing the model or execution that I'm doing. So to bring you to the, the Board of Commissioners, um, I met with them and pretty much I said, uh I'm, I'm not gonna do this, this big encyclopedia. I know what the architects give. It's this huge encyclopedia needs assessment. It's eighty grand and it sits on a shelf. I'm gonna walk your buildings with your maintenance guy. I'm gonna come back to you and tell you what you really need to focus on the next three or five years. Whether you like it or not, this has to be addressed with. Either you do it reactive or you get on top of it proactively. Um, the Board of Commissioners um settled on what you have. So within that packet, by the way, um I actually reached out to three clients to write letters of recommendation. Um, two of which I have done exactly why I'm here today. I've gone before their councils. I've gone before their board commissioners. Um, but behind those three letters of recommendation from other uh Board of Commissioners presidents is the actual scope of work. Um, so the, the list that the Board of Commissioners settled on was to um, through discussions with me, the right way to do it. To bundle the three roofs, you have to do some concrete work. And then the second floor courthouse renovation. So the first and the third, third floor have been renovated, but the second the restrooms are, are existing flooring, the paint, and especially the AC issue. Um, and then the courthouse mechanical for the third floor. So they settled on those, those projects in terms of what they'd like to run with. So the the subject matter expertise to do this right is, is really what, where you're gonna get your best bang for your buck. Um, you guys are short, um, your maintenance, um, gentleman that I walked with, really great guy, but he officially uh retired. So you're down to one, but it's, it's an issue that actually is affecting um a lot of the counties, being that all they have is a custodial or a maintenance guy, and this is way, way out of the real house. If you needed a little furnace in, in a closet, I'd say go ahead and leave that with them to bid that out. You have, you have some serious heavy lifting here. So your basic options to do this right are take it in-house. Um, and like the council president said when I was at Board of Commissioners, why don't we just take this and and go out to bid with it? Well, I would say um to that, who's gonna put the specs together? Um, that's where you go south really quick on projects. That'd be like um reaching out to car dealers. I want a truck. And then you end up one, you, that's all you say, I need a truck.
Well, you realize we've done that with these projects though, right? We built a jail. We, we, we renovated our courthouse. We renovated our called Annex Two. I mean, we've done a lot of that. We're a project manager for that, but I mean
But with architects and engineers, what I'm saying is for the
Right, so I mean, we're talking about painting and fixing up bathrooms. We don't usually get a project manager for a small project like that. I mean and just to your point, we would always, we would always take this kind of a amount. We would take it out the bin anyways.
Correct.
So I mean
What I'm saying, it's not just paint. I mean, in terms of the second floor would be a complete project, a complete bundle. I would run with all the HVAC, which it has to be sized and spec right. What I'm saying is that everyone else is, whether it's an architect or an engineer, I deal with this my whole career.
But what, what, what qualification? I'm just curious, because I, you know, I have heard more than what the council had, because I was at the commissioner meetings when you were there. So you're a certified engineer then? Like, you have the engineering background to be able to decide that we need these size air handling and, you know, we need these fixtures and things like that, because I didn't see that on your resume.
So I'm not, I'm not a professional engineer, which is why I focus on device for device systems. But with device for device, there's still alterations and changes. Now, I would size, just from my experience, I would size the Douglas heat pumps for the second floor, absolutely all day. There'd be no issue there. But if you were building a jail, yeah, that would have to be professionally sized. But for instance, now with your air handler and your um outside condensers at the courthouse, those have to be upgraded and changed. But my point is, you have an act, you have someone on your side of the table that is basically telling the contractors, everyone's quoting apples to apples. You have to
Well, we also have you on that side of the table and need telling us we need to buy something that really isn't broken, but you know, you should fix it. I mean, so I was trying to explain that before, like, you've worked with a lot of private entities. And that's great that they're dripping with cash, that they can do all these renovations and improvements. Like, we want to improve things. We, we know we want burned it to have, you know, different air conditioning and things like that, but I mean, we're not just looking just to you know, upgrade. I mean, we just, we're, we're not, we don't have that kind of wealth in this county. So I mean, that's
Correct.
Kind of my, why I was bringing that up about, you know, how we know a few things.
So one, why I'm growing so fast is the numbers I get. You're not playing games with me. You're not gouging me. I actually know what I'm looking at, what I'm talking about. Jay County got a proposal for one boiler for ninety eight grand. I got involved and got two boilers for a hundred fifteen grand installed. Martin County got a quote for eighty thousand dollars for a fire enunciator. I got involved and got it, the system with an additional pump for thirty five thousand. I had a commissioner calling and saying, Matt, we need an eight thousand dollar heat pump. They're saying we can't get a circuit board. Then it's a hundred degrees outside. We gotta get this heat pump. I made a phone call and got a seventy dollar circuit board. I had a video system at Jay County Jail that was six hundred thousand. I got it for two hundred and eighty thousand. I get good numbers. I get good numbers.
The other thing is, we also have a policy too that we established, I think in like two thousand thirteen, maybe even earlier than that, that we said we would use local um, contractors too. So I mean, I, I, I think we would probably have to look deeper in how you operate to make sure that you at least give our local contractors an opportunity for this too. So, I mean, and even, you know, for me, I mean, we've even done that before. I mean, if it's moderately more, but we're using somebody local, I mean, we make decisions like that too. That's why government gets more involved in that. Especially in a community like ours where we're trying to help, you know, people's parties and stuff.
I, I think what you need to understand is that I, I'm niche, because I'm literally the only entity that's on your side of the table. Even my fee structure, I'm the only guy that is
Well, if you were on my side of the table, you'd be making what I get paid. You get paid something out of this too, though, I mean, you're
I'm not talking from a compensation. I'm talking that I actually, I am the only one that actually has your interest at heart. There's a reason everyone else is percent fee based. There's a reason that architects and engineers that are able to do this before they even shake your hand with your budget. I don't care where your budget is. And I definitely don't operate on a percent fee basis. You know the problem there. I now have the motive of the more bells and whistles, the more this is over-engineered, the more bells and whistles, the more I get paid. There, this is as transparent and fair. I'm on your side of the table calling the contractors out. I've been where there's contractors flipping out. That wasn't what we were told to spec. I spec this, this, and I'm not getting awarded. He's getting awarded because I, he didn't quote that. I, my RFP package, which I showed the commiss, the court of commissioners, is very thick. It is very robust. And it is not off the shelf. Every single bit is customized. Every single contractor has to do a walk, uh, on sort, onsite tour with me. And I don't do them grouped. I know the game of them getting together behind the scenes. You come one at a time, you see everything in the same order. If you ask a question, you ask a question, put in an email, all four or five bit and get the same. I am as open and Put in an email, all four or five bit and get the same, I am as open and fair, all the the commissioners and um. Commissioner Jim Meese, which was the front one part county, he's he's been a commissioner twenty years, he's I I've run projects before court for twenty years. I won't do another project without court. It it literally takes every, so who's gonna manage the payoffs? If a contractor sends you an invoice for eighty grand, is there anyone to actually get in that attic? Or get on the roof and actually make sure it's installed right, or are you just gonna pay it? People start to finish, this is nothing more than than serious protection, but you gotta have someone to manage all this anyways. Just the way I do it is better than everyone else.
They're gonna be guaranteed it's engineered, right?
Oh, yeah.
So.
Engineer. Correct, so the only thing that is, that I will, and if you want as a second level, I can have the specs, I know engineers, I can. Put the specs together and have them stamp it.
Right.
For your second floor HVAC. That's eight, I believe, it was eight or nine Douglas heat pumps. That's walking the park, but if you want that layer, I I know what I'm capable of and what I'm not, but everything else actually is device for device. Which is why.
Really, you're a project manager, you wanna come in here and just be the project manager, I mean, right? I mean, I I guess we're just trying to figure out, what are we getting from you? My normally government, I mean, we're we're kind of elected to do that, like to make sure we hire the right people and, you know, make, I mean. You know, it's nice that you're, you know, willing to help us and things like that, but I guess I'm just trying to figure out what your role would be. Because here here's my thoughts, because I I honestly don't wanna drag this out all night, um, is that it sounds like the commissioners are interested in doing a few projects here. I I don't know that the council agrees a hundred percent that we need some or all, but we haven't really even got an official notice from them that they wanna do these projects. But I think the thing would be, is if we're gonna break them out into these individual projects, which makes sense, that we give you an opportunity to bid for it, we give. You know, we put it up for bid like we would normally, and you know, you can bid against our, our, you know, our local, you know, um. Capabilities, our local companies and like.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a G C. I'm not bid, I'm not bidding, I'm managing the project, I would actually from start to finish. Feasibility, put the specs together, put the request for proposal together, and then sequence on your.
Yeah, I guess, I guess. Pretty small project. I mean, I I don't know that they need a project manager, I mean, it's not like we're building a courthouse, so I'm just not sure.
I don't. There is an enormous amount of talent and time to run with those from start to finish.
I got a question, Dave, whenever I can ask. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, courthouse renovation, second floor paint flooring, HVAC. Four quality restroom renovations, fixtures, walls, toilets, toilets, sinks and lighting. For phase one, the total cost of that, of taking care of all that is sixty-two thousand dollars, right? Okay, this is a real simple question. Out of that sixty-two thousand dollars, how much do you make?
That would be my fee.
That's your fee?
That's my fee.
Sixty-two thousand?
Sixty-two thousand, correct, and if you wanna.
And that is what all that, okay, I see, that's.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
You gotta understand that, so that's sixty-two thousand dollars plus paint, plus boring, plus HVAC, plus the restroom renovations.
That's to, that's to, you have, you have a million plus dollars of work right here. Someone has to manage it, if you don't wanna have it managed professionally, make sure it's, if you're gonna spend a million dollars on these projects. I know if I was spending a million dollars, I'd wanna make sure they were done, right?
Just out of curiosity, did anybody tell you where we were gonna get this million dollars?
I'm not on the fiscal board, I I'm simply in the next step of what the Board of Commissioners wanted to do.
Right, but I mean, so like, so yeah, this is just your management, because this is what I was getting.
I did not know that.
Cause when you look at these numbers, well, well, we talked about like, well, you know.
So can can I ask, Justin, maybe you know this, maybe you don't. Who's handling all the Plastica County? The courthouse and the jail, is that just Nathan or is there?
Well, that's bonded, that's a bonded.
Oh, it is, okay.
Sure, it's managed, I don't know.
Okay, alright. I don't know if they had like project, I don't know.
And uh, councilman, in terms of my fees, um, I have a lot of relationships and know a lot of architects and engineers. No one will touch those fees. I'm actually well below the industry standard, and if they, one, no one does flat fee, which is usually really attractive. But everyone else would do a percent fee, and if your actual project with me bidding everything came to eight hundred thousand. Anyone else, cause you need someone to put all this together, you can need RFPs and specs, you need someone to tell you it's done right. Um, but yeah, they're percent fee, and when the end, the final numbers are one point six or one point eight, and then they're fifteen, twenty percent of that. So yeah, in terms of my fees, um, no one, no one of my skill center talent in terms of architects or engineer uh, will touch my fees.
I think what we need to know, though, is is that's what I was getting at, I was trying to help the council with this, is that your fees are a hundred and eighty-five thousand, how much is the rest of the project? We don't know that, like, how can we even talk about approving, you know, a project and a project manager? We don't even know what the scope of the project is and how mu, you know, like.
So it's actually why it's broken down into two, that's the Board of Commissioners, anyone that's gonna throw numbers out and just estimate. One, you can't estimate in today's climate, and if they do, then they're taking you to the woodshed on purpose. But due to procurement and inflation, numbers, everything is skewed, no one's actually getting right numbers. And if they are giving you numbers, they're giving you really high numbers. So that was actually what the Board of Commissioners and I advised them, break this into two. You get hard numbers, bid the projects ready to award now or next year. If you award the project, then the second half would be me managing it boots on the ground. So it's not all, what you're, what you're improving or would be improving is not, we're doing all these projects. You are actually getting to the point where all four of those project bundles are ready to award. You actually now have hard numbers.
How are they ready to award if we don't have the funds to award them, though, I don't know what you mean. You will have, where where am I gonna get the money? Where are we gonna get the money to pay for this, if you get a word?
I'm not so sure if you couldn't ask for an RFP from several engineering firms.
I'm saying your fees are outrageous, I don't know, I mean, but I think I personally, if I, I could probably like. Help the county out and talk to some of these HVAC people and painting people and things like that, but hey, I don't know, um, you know.
So we're saying this is a two million dollar project?
No, I'm not saying that.
Well, your your fees have to be based off of some percentage for something, I mean, you can't arbitrarily just say it's gonna be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there has to be some value to what the project is based off what work you have to do. That has to all coincide, I work for an engineering company, so I know, I know how this works. I know how this works.
Correct.
And there has to be, there has to be a final value that you envision, it's gonna be one point five, it's gonna be three million. Okay, I'm gonna have this percentage, this amount of work, and this is the fee I'm gonna charge, these are just arbitrary numbers.
They're, they're not arbitrary, they're they're. I mean, doing this for twenty years, I know the level of work and time that's needed to do this from start to finish.
Well, the problem is.
If I wanted to do it based off of numbers, I would be percent fee based.
Well, these fees are still based off of percentage of something, they have to be, they just can't be. Okay, I think it's gonna paint, it's gonna cost me, you know, whatever, eight thousand dollars to project manage, somebody paid it. I mean, there has to be some justifications of why this amount is what it is.
Yes.
I don't know.
There, I mean, like you said, I don't know if we talked to another management company, but I I I mean, first of all. Like, I think we need to decide what our budget is for renovation of the courthouse, and we would just spent hundreds of thousands, we just spent twenty thousand on a. Bathroom renovation for the um, what do you call it, court, jury?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean. I didn't realize we were still on the road of spending millions of dollars on the courthouse, I didn't, I didn't think we needed that, I mean, I know you did a need assessment. But I think the first thing we need from the commissioners is, what is the scope of their complete project? And how we wanna appropriate the funds for that, is this gonna be a five-year project, is it gonna be something we're gonna try to do next year? And what I'd really like to know is.
Probably gonna pay for it.
Where is that money gonna come from?
Correct, but that's where the commissioner saw value, we can't budget for this till we ha have hard numbers. We can't decide are we doing this six months or are we doing this two years from now unless we have hard numbers. So you're gonna have your three or four quotes per project, ready to execute, and now you can actually internally say. We have the money here.
So I could either pay you a hundred and eighty-five thousand, or I could just call, call the local companies that I know here and say, hey, give me a quote for each one of these things. And then say, okay.
Design bill. Yeah, what what are you gonna do for this?
It's a hundred and forty-nine plus thirty-six, I get one eighty-five, what do you get?
The thirty-six is the management on the backend. That's if you do the projects.
So if we don't do, it's only.
So it's a hundred and forty-nine to start. It's not twenty-five.
For you to have four quotes ready to award for every one of those projects, that's the fee.
That's for you getting the quotes, okay, um, well, still. We've stopped with the funds to award it, so this is what I'll say is, I'll defer to the council on this. You wanna get more feedback from the commissioners, we could motion the table, um. I don't, I I I'm confused.
I I I I think that the.
You say, you know where we're at?
I think we need to find out whether we can afford to do the projects versus paying a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
You need to define a direction from the commissioners, they need to say what projects are we considering, I mean, we can't do all of them, right?
The scope and the priority, and then we figure out what we can do.
It's a service contract.
Is a priority in here? That's, that's the thing.
So I actually went to them with six projects, and those were their higher priority, but yeah, I think, I think that. I think that what's the. Yeah, but I think it comes down to, this is, I'm at the direction of the commissioners. Um, and so, yeah, I think there's a breakdown between the council and commissioners in terms of where, you know, where am I getting funding, where are you getting? But I'm just saying that if you end up taking these project bundles under, someone has to manage them. And if you're gonna end up having someone manage them, um, you're gonna pay a ton more than you will.
Bid for that too, I mean, there is a such thing as putting a RFP or R uh, P out for. Yeah, project management, yeah, whatever, so I mean, I I maybe your price is okay, I'm not disputing that part about it, I just don't know where we got an extra million when we're out. Motion a second, is there any further discussion? Thank you, sir, for coming out, I I don't, I think we have more planning to do, but um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, so, thank you, we'll be back in time, go out to commissioners.
But also, in terms, what I may say on, it's in terms of, we just had a public meeting. Where, I've never seen it before, we just had a public meeting where out loud, my numbers and quotes were read, and now you're saying you're gonna bid that out. Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, first of all, we need to know what the scope is of each project.
Sure.
We don't, we don't even know that, what I'm saying is, if we need a project manager, we know what your cost is, we give that to us. It's a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-nine thousand to get started, uh, whatever the thirty-six is. Me, as an elected official, I was elected to go out here, my constituents money.
Oh, correct.
At that level, I would bid it out.
Oh, absolutely, in 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 our defense, this was not a sealed bid project, you you gave us the paperwork, it's public record. So, if anybody can look at this anytime they want to, there's nothing to hide, so there's no thing about if we read it out loud or not that.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, in terms of my quote, if now after my quote is read aloud, that you say we wanna get quotes, that. That doesn't, that doesn't work, you don't read numbers out.
I don't know if it's really a quote.
Thank you, and yeah, I would say definitely clarify with the commissioners.
Purdue transfer, we have a series of transfers here. Probably straighten up for the end of the year. Does anybody have any questions um, about this, somebody might make a motion?
I make a motion that the Purdue extension office transfer to be made.
We have a motion from Howard and that'll cover both, both of those, right?
Do we have to read them?
Um, you can just say from longevity travel.
From longevity to travel, one zero zero point three oh two oh four point zero 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 point oh oh two one. To zero 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 point one oh five five oh point zero 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 point oh oh two one.
In the amount?
In the amount of five hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
And you don't want the, the numbers, don't want you just say, you know, longevity five seventy-six.
Longevity five seventy-six, travel expense five seventy-six to longevity five seventy-six, ninety-four.
You did the other one too, Howard? There should be.
I'm close to shopping.
A hundred and two dollars.
A hundred and two dollars to be made out of office supplies, account one zero 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 point two oh one zero zero point oh 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 oh. Point zero zero two one into account one zero 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 point three oh one zero zero point zero 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 zero. Zero zero point oh oh two one to postage, the amount of a hundred and two dollars.
Okay, we have two motions, is there two seconds?
Sure.
Done, all those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed?
Thank you.
We have something similar from the recorder, I personally don't have any questions and would entertain a motion if somebody.
I have one question. I thought the county is gonna supply vehicles to start driving. For mileage.
So, um, there's our travel policy, hasn't been updating yet, we've been kind of reviewing that, but. The elected officials, and this might be mileage for elected officials, but the elected officials still take their own vehicles sometimes. Manny does use the the county vehicle when.
You're from the sheriff.
Yeah, the white car, the conference vehicle, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, stop here.
I'll make the motion. For the recorder's office, that we make a transfer of mileage of two fifty-nine point five ones, to help for two fifty-nine fifty-one, or the other way around.
Motion is our second.
I'll send it in.
All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Dan's got some that are a little bit more creative.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw many.
Oh, my goodness.
Does anybody have any questions? I mean. I did personally did not meet with Dan on these, but we did meet a couple of months back and talked about getting these things done by the end of the year, so. He is uh, being compliant with what we asked from the council. How was it that you had extra left and bookkeeper and clerk, I just don't remember?
It wasn't a whole plane, this one?
Alright, so if you won't have that extra, that's good, then, sure, that's what I was thinking, okay.
The need for the extra travel. Um, one is, we worked with the um. River Basin project, and they bought the stone through the county to get their ideal, and then the solar projects.
Can anybody mind that? I'm gonna make the motions for once. Um, I'll make the motion that we, that we allow the highway department. To deposit twenty-three thousand in chlorides from stone gravel and aggregates. Uh, nine thousand from bookkeeper and clerk. Into office supplies one thousand, maintenance and repair five thousand, newspaper and advertising two thousand five hundred. Printing and duplicating five hundred. And then taking from. Let's say, area, general foreman, forty-four thousand, truck drivers, fifty thousand for a total of ninety-four thousand. Fifteen thousand and the part-time workers, twenty-six thousand and the worker truck drivers, fourteen thousand three hundred into overtime. Thirty-two thousand five hundred twenty-five into aggregates, five thousand eight hundred into road signs, please remind me to ask you about that. Three seventy-five into drainage. And then finally, from mechanics ten thousand, health insurance eighty thousand. Repair road equipment thirty thousand into forty thousand liability insurance. And fifty thousand truck and tractor repaired.
Didn't we have a big discussion about the health insurance?
Yes, but give me a second, somebody first, and then we'll do discussion.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Brad, okay? I have a second from Brad, okay, your question, cuz I wanted to ask about those things.
Didn't didn't they have a big discussion about how the health insurance went up so much, yours or no, didn't we have that discussion?
Less people, so he had more health.
We were understaffed.
Okay.
Yeah.
A lot more than that.
Why fifty eight hundred for road signs? We just spent all that money on. And and did we start putting those tracking devices on the road signs like we talked about, away from the owner?
I have not heard anything about tracking devices in road signs.
Alright, my motion stands, second stands, is there any further discussion, I was curious, this seemed like.
It seems a little excessive, there's an excess in the general foreman's budget of forty four thousand and fifty thousand in the truck drivers, explain.
We didn't have them.
We didn't have them.
Short.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's positions that aren't filled, that there's.
That money went into part-time help and winter truck drivers.
That same question I asked the last meeting in reference to paramedics, why they're so much extra money, okay, makes sense, sir.
Hey, any other discussion, we have a motion a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, Daniel, but thank you. Um, we'll, uh, finish with the parks department on those, I just wanna learn, well, I know I've been working with Tracy quite a bit, um, the commissioners had, you know, kind of. You know, I have. Asked me to help with the parks a little bit, and help them with their budgets and different things, been really great to work with, really happy. Um, that she's on board, the most recent thing before I left on my last trip, she accommodated on Sunday because I was getting ready to travel, we looked at the building at fast lake. It was in impressive shape, and I have to give her credit for, um, pointing out that it was better than we thought, so. Just really excited about Tracy and what Tracy's doing, so I just wanted to give her some quick accolades.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion, Dave?
I'm ready for you.
Make a motion that we make a reduction in utilities and the amount of three thousand. Repair and maintenance and the amount of two thousand. And move that into part-time worker and the amount of five thousand, and that's for the parks and recreation.
We have a motion, is there a second? I'm second, okay, is there any further discussion? Thank you, all all in favor, sorry. Ah, additional appropriation for the CCD. We don't have anything.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, you don't have.
You got a motion?
I make the motion that we pay for spirit tip.
Kind of motion, is there a second?
It's to approve the disassociation for the CCD.
Yeah, but for that investigation. Yeah, cause this will open it for discussion, yeah. All those in favor, please say aye. And is there any opposed? And then, uh, we saw Saw Justin's contract, believe it or believe it was. Uh, please make sure Rachel gets this back when I'm sending down right now, you'll sign it on the I side. Somebody wanna make a motion, uh, for.
Motion, we approved Justin's contract.
I have a motion for Brad, is there a second? Is there any further discussion?
Done a great job.
Thank you, thank you, Justin, thank you. It was real push when I first reached out, and, you know, I had my fingers crossed, we were, you were in a tight spot, we really appreciate you helping us out.
Thank you, guys, you did an excellent choice.
All those in favor, please say aye. The only last thing that we had. Was, I brought up today at the meeting, and, uh, again, I I first of all, I wanna say that we're never, the council's never picking on any employee. But if you remember. We learned later by statute that we needed to, uh, make a confirmation about the salary for Bill Kreis, who was a surveyor. Because he wasn't actually a certified surveyor, but then. The commissioners made a case with us, um, based on his, uh, qualifications and his, uh, time on the county, all these other things, and so we approved that. The problem is, by statute technically, when you're not certified. Um, you only make two thirds of the salary. Where we're at risk is, if they replace him again. When the next person that gets elected, if they're not, if they are certified, then it goes to one and a half times, and so he's getting the full amount now. So by statute, it's two thirds. So, um, again, we weren't, we aren't picking on anybody, just, it's, and it says clearly, um, in the statutes. Um, that are associated, that the fiscal body makes that decision, so, uh, wh- what our plan would be is to. Uh, honor the salary ordinance, can't do it this year because he's already. Essentially grandfathered him, but starting in twenty twenty three, that he would make the appropriate salary. Now, he does have the option to get certified then and then move back up to that, um, you know, full amount.
Well, are you, but are you talking about, like, hypothetically, if the salary. Thirty nine thousand dollars right now, you wanna reduce it by two thirds? So you only, for one third, so you only wanna pay full-time surveyor twenty eight thousand, I don't know what it would be.
It's more than that, but yes.
What is it?
I think it's, isn't it forty nine?
No, his, his, the, the salary right now is thirty nine thousand.
You get all the mileage and all the other.
It's thirty nine thousand.
He gets this mileage.
Twelve hundred dollars.
They get less, they get less if you're a certifier.
The bottom line is, is the statute is a statute right now, we gotta set them out, the salary ordinance that reflects full pay, we can always debate that.
In the meeting this morning, you said that either he stays that where he's at now, and you just up what what it would be for.
Say it for this year.
So, this year he would stay where he's at, essentially, year.
But, I just wanna know what would the salary be next year?
It'd be two thirds of what the amount is, two thirds, whatever it is.
Dollars this year, how much would it be next year?
It'd be sixty six point seven or sixty seven percent of, it's two thirds.
This is by statute, not by the council.
So you're gonna pay the surveyor than twenty six thousand four hundred. For a full-time unlicensed surveyor.
It's the way the statute reads. Based on what, what the salary is set. Otherwise, somebody comes in there and then we're paying them seventy thousand. Then what do we do? We can't even afford to pay seven dollars.
We understand why you're advocating, we totally agree too, but we're following the statute.
I know, it just seems like paying an elected official twenty six thousand dollars is full-time unlicensed officials.
Well, run for that office, they know what it is.
Right, and the thing is, is, hopefully that would attract somebody that has a fair certification to run for the office.
This person that was caucus in didn't know that was gonna happen.
Right.
Different if it wasn't statutory, it's statutory, so I mean.
But, okay, so the, for the, and I'm getting your salary ordinance ready for twenty twenty three, for your next meeting. So you want me to put twenty six thousand four hundred, or six, six, whatever it is, I I know it's not. Whatever sixty six percent of.
The salary though, not his additional things, yes. And, but we'd have to make a motion on that.
Would we have to have the ordinance as well, the special ordinance like only sent you or no?
Yeah, I I saw what you. Did the website, but yeah, so. With confusion lay is, you are not required to reduce his current salary, what you're required to do is if somebody else comes in, you have to pay them fifty percent more. As a registered surveyor, so, i- it's not saying, I mean, you can keep them where you're at now, but you're paying. Fifty percent on top of that, if somebody else comes in, you're paying sixty thousand dollars. Plus the additional benefits, you're right, reading to the seventy thousand dollar bank, what you're trying to do is protect, if your surveyor that comes in that's registered, paying them. Statutorily fifty percent more, so it doesn't say you have to reduce it, it's saying in future, we're trying to protect ourselves now, so we're not increasing. You know, that line item by fifty percent, just. So we get that on record, because it's not saying we have to reduce it, it's saying if we don't. Then he's grandfathered in at the higher rate, and then we have to propel somebody else that's registered above that rate later. Um, yeah, to answer your question, it would be, it needs to be via ordinance. To reduce.
I mean, the other thing is, is that for all of our positions, and this dates back to when you were commissioner, uh, to die, is that. We have a scale. You know, and so the other thing is, is that, you know, what had been brought up is basically we're starting out somebody new, that is a new surveyor at the top of the scale. So, I don't know, is, are you, are you suggesting as the HR representative that we should have something, some other conceded? Concession to that and and have some other, you know, something aside from the ordinance or, or the statute?
I just. So, let me, can I ask you, what, I I I, I understand the statutes, the things that we have to do. But twenty six thousand dollars compared to what the other elected, full-time elected, oh, elected officials are making is, that's. Way out of line, it's, it's under. Let's just say our treasurer of the, our Stark County treasurer is a certified public accountant, does that mean we're double overpaid? They're paying? I I'm just asking for reference. Yeah, well, I wondered, is it, I wondered if, if in the statute.
Supervisor, it's engineering type one.
Okay.
Highway supervisor, surveyor, what else?
I still think, I mean, they knew when they'd run, which like. But they knew before they signed up for the ball.
Well, they knew what current salary.
Well, right.
Not that it was.
We're not cutting it from him right now.
No, but, and you, there are only certain time periods that you can mess with an elected official salary. Like, you can't mess with it the year before the signups for an election, you can't mess with it during the current year. So like, next year is your prime year to do, if you're gonna do something, you need to do it, because twenty twenty four would be the signups.
That means we couldn't do it.
That's the year before the election, so we couldn't do it, we have to do, we have to do it now, or we can't do it until twenty twenty five. Yeah, we have, it has to be now, or twenty twenty five.
Well, no, you can't. They can't do it next year, right?
No.
Before signups.
We can't do it next year, cuz it'd be.
Now, cuz you can't mess with it during a year.
No, we can do it for next year. And the next year, we couldn't do it for twenty four.
You're talking about he, the ordinance. Says it would increase by fifty percent, but then you're talking about reducing his pay by by thirty three percent.
What, just boy, the math works out.
Did somebody pull the salary ordinance up on their phone, so we know exactly what he's making or how?
Plus, plus, plus the mileage, it isn't even part of it.
I got it right here.
You got the ordinance?
I got the amount of what the salary is.
What is it?
It's forty one thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars.
That's what his salary is.
Plus the mileage, the ditch mileage in the corner, section corners.
No, that's total. It's thirty, thirty nine is the base.
Okay, because there's a different, there's a different fee schedule for, for the section corners.
In twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, cuz it's like two dollars, one is two dollars, I believe the other is.
And they only get the section corners if they filed correctly for it, which Bill never did.
And, but even the mileage, I think if you look at the statute for the mileage, I'm not so sure. If it's not one rate for, for certified and another rate for not certified.
Where we just pay twelve hundred, I don't know what that.
That would be like probably six hundred miles. Is what it should be.
I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying.
I I wish there was a way to close the gap.
Sense to say, okay, a certified surveyor gets sixty thousand dollars, and then sixty six percent of that is what he's making now. Rather than taking it down to twenty six thousand.
Well, I agree with that, and because we're back on that scale with what other elected officials are making.
But they get certified.
Yeah, how hard is that?
Graduation. And a lot of schooling, specific record, at least four years of experience in surveying, etc., etc. You have to, it's a vessel passing the examination, so it's, it's at least four years.
Or eight, or eight years of relevant experience, is I think, is in the statute too, or?
Are you willing to help pay for college?
Eight years of surveying.
No. Not, no. We gotta help every other single person in the county pay for college, that's how government goes. So.
Well, I I I agree, I didn't think so, but I thought I'd ask.
I mean, there is requirements for other offices too, right, the assessor has to be a level whatever assessor, right?
Not to run, but by the end of their first year, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so.
Right, so it's not, it's not apples to apples, as we are saying, you know.
No.
But the assessor gets paid for her levels, or his levels.
I understand that.
That's, that's, that's exactly my point. I guess, is the county willing to pay sixty five thousand dollars if somebody runs and is certified?
That's the question.
That is the question.
Well, I understand it, yeah, it, it's between sixty five and eighty thousand for, for a certified. Surveyor.
Back to the. Bill obviously had a lot more experience at position, so he was at the top of the scale. Obviously, that's six thousand is the bottom of the scale, I mean, is there something in it? That we feel comfortable with in the middle then?
I mean, that's not even a fair statement. I mean, back, back to that.
That's what I mean, if we say that twenty six is the bottom. I mean, we still have to come up with the number by the time election time.
So you're, you're wanting to like arrange for the bottom. Right?
I think, well, I I think, just, just for our calculation right now, twenty six is the bottom, for sure, by statute, twenty six is the current bottom. You know, I mean. I don't know, he don't have his resume in front of us, so we don't know what surveyor experience he has already, I, I don't think any, right?
No, I, I, I admit it.
Are you an engineer or?
No.
Am I asking, what were you before you did this?
Uh, I was a truck driver, before that, I was retired military with an engineer company.
When they, when they hired you, were you, was it, were you told what your salary was gonna be?
No, well, he wasn't hired, he was caucus.
Well, okay, well, well, he was caucus then.
Yes.
Well, did somebody, whether. Were you ever told what your salary was gonna be? When you volunteered to be, when you called wanted yourself caucus in, did you know how much you were gonna make?
No, I didn't.
You didn't know how much you were gonna make, and you were never told that if, if you were a licensed surveyor, your salary would be. And I'm still confused whether it's thirty three percent or fifty percent.
No, it's. If, if you do the math backwards, based on the one and a half versus what it is, it comes out to be sixty seven percent, because.
The number used in the statute is one point five times, and then you pay for an.
So, so it turns out to be six percent, six, seven percent less because of that. It doesn't say sixty seven percent less in the statute, it's just working the math backwards.
But in, in the, in the past, has any of the surveyors in Stark County ever been a certified surveyor?
Sure they have. Dan Janovich, Joe Smur, I was surveyor, I wasn't certified, but I had over eight years of experience. I mean. He's stuck, he wasn't. But I don't know what happened when he was in here.
But, but Bill Case was a surveyor, was he?
No, he wasn't, not to my knowledge.
Since you have been certified as well, as I know.
Yeah.
Cuz it was Danny, Bill.
Yeah.
Now, did, did you guys lower his salaries, their salaries?
We, we went through the whole thing with Bill because. And maybe we did it for the.
Well, the commissioners came to us with the case on it, we did, we approved.
Yeah, because Bill was doing so much, he had been in there. He was doing a lot of the work with the solar, very involved in the plan commission, in hindsight, we probably shouldn't have done it the way we did it. Um, just because we did one wrong doesn't mean we need to keep doing more wrongs. I don't know, that's just my feeling on it.
I just see, it's so hard to get people to sign up to run for our office anymore, I just. I don't see how we're gonna make ourselves better by making the salary twenty six thousand dollars. Fun circle, for, you know, not certified, and if you're a certified surveyor, you don't wanna come work for county government for sixty thousand, no.
Well, he's not applying for a job, somebody's running for an office, it's a different story.
Future, it's just gonna be hard to get people to.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard for you to, you know, to talk to us about it, because look where our salaries.
We've, we can't. You cannot, you cannot compare the private sector to any of this, I mean. A position like Dan's, the private sector, probably ninety, a hundred thousand dollars. Easily, so, I mean.
I agree, I agree, but you're just talking about a full-time position for twenty six thousand.
Because of the statute, I, you gotta do something, we gotta do it, right?
Yeah, I mean. I, I agree, twenty six is too low.
Right, and like you said, at the bottom, at the very bottom.
The man has a lot of experience with life, you know what I'm saying, it's not like he's a college graduate or a high school graduate, just getting a job with us. No offense to all of those that are employed by us that are freshly out of college or high school, so, I don't mean anything like that, just saying. So.
Cuz we're, we're locked into it.
Let's come up with some number between there, that's fair with it.
Well, didn't we give Bill Kreis, was it fifteen, what? Well, didn't we give Bill Kreis, was it fifteen, what, we gave him his increase when the commissioners came to him? What was that increase?
He's gonna go up to forty-six thousand.
Okay, so it was, it was about five, what, we gave him five thousand roughly?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four hundred.
They wanted five.
Right, that's what it was.
We won for sixteen and you negotiated it up to thirty-four.
You wanted eight?
Yeah.
Or eight.
And when you win thirty-four.
So what's it gonna be? It's gonna be twenty, would you say twenty-six now?
Uh, yeah, if you do the sixty-six percent of the salary now.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion from Don for thirty-four, is there a second? I'll second that. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
I'll say aye.
Is there any opposed?
I am.
One, one name, Rachel.
Who was the second?
The second was Don, or I'm the second, sorry.
And Howard's name. And is that thirty-four thousand for the um licensed and then I would. I would write in the salary ordinance what the license would be. Fifty-one.
Well, it's already. They, I think the statute lists two different things. They list certified and non-certified. There's a statute for each one. And then if the certified is, if they meet that statute, then it's one and a half.
One and a half.
We have nothing, that's the way it is.
But it puts like right into fifty, and honestly, if you remember, we looked at the range on that, there were several that were below forty. I mean, you know, when we came up, I saw, I think fifty is kind of a fair mark for now, until we are faced with that situation. Of having somebody that is certified that we.
I I I think, I think we got, I think we got a little bit of a problem here, maybe. Can I, can I speak? The reason I'm saying that is. That salary that we're saying, this, what did we say, this thirty?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Does that include the mileage in the corners?
No.
Okay, it doesn't, okay, because that cannot be included in.
No, I mean, I think we have to.
But but I do believe. If you look by, look at the statute, I believe there's a different rate. For that versus being certified.
Oh, there is, for those rates, they're different too, they are.
One's two dollars and one's four dollars.
I'm getting salary order ready for next meeting, I'm gonna be adding five percent to everything. Am I adding five percent to this or no?
No.
So can I recommend you revise your, because this actually has to be voted on in salary ordinance, which necessitates a public hearing. So perhaps we can revise the motion to say to place it in the salary ordinance, which will then have to be voted on after a public hearing. Because otherwise, what we're doing, we're piecemealing a salary ordinance right now that haven't gone through public hearing. So perhaps if we revise the motion to say that we want this figure put in the salary ordinance, but it'll still have to be approved for twenty-three. In the salary ordinance, which again has to.
Is that okay? I'll second that then. I guess we can retell you about, all those in favor, aye? Maybe you're an aye this time, Howard?
Well, it has to pass an ordinance before we can vote on becoming law, right?
Right, yes.
Well, that I support, I support having a public. Sure, that I do.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Rachel, did you have anything else? Sir? The only thing else from the council. Anything else from the public?
Are we gonna talk about the court?
The court, city courts. Oh, I talked about it at the beginning.
Yeah, I know, I I didn't know if that was an entire.
Oh, oh, that's it, um.
Okay.
Uh, well, just to finish that, what happened is is. The time crunch really wasn't on them, because they said they wanted to have it, they said they wanted by their December meeting, which is tomorrow.
Yes.
And then all of a sudden in the last hour, they said they'd rather have it. At a far December meetings, so. Okay, they gave us some more time.
So this, this doesn't have to, this doesn't come before a vote, before the council with the. City court expense and income that were taken over the hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, right?
A hundred and eighteen is.
Okay, a hundred and eighteen. And the county is, because, understand that there was only three council members at the meeting. Don wasn't there, Don, I wasn't there, Todd wasn't there, so this is fairly all due to us. The county is going to pay. The city of Knox approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and change a year, right?
Yes.
Okay. The city court will be transferred to the county jail in the courtroom, right? Okay, and. The revenue that the city makes uh from what we'd gotten was roughly twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, it was like one forty-six minus twenty.
Right, I got you.
Yeah.
So as that, say as that residue would increase every, say it would increase to thirty-two thousand next year.
Yes.
That would come off of our hundred and eighteen thousand.
I've asked Justin to incorporate that into the.
Okay, and just for the record, and and liability. No, I'm not talking about injury liability, or or necessarily physical liability. I'm talking about liability of a bailiff or or somebody would would do something wrong and there would be some type of a civil action against them. Is it the city of Knox or is it, or is it Stark County that that would be liable? We're acting as a contractor, from what I understand, then we're con. We're contracting that to the ci- the city of Knox, we're paying the city of Knox to conduct our court.
For a service, yes.
For a service, so where does liability lay?
With them.
With the city. Again, I'm asking these questions because. Four of us weren't included in in the, on the meeting.
Well, and I hope you don't feel like with people, I, that you were being left out or anything, Howard, it was just, the bottom line is. I personally didn't want to make this a full-blown. Call you guys at the last minute and let's have an official meeting. It just didn't make sense to have a quorum style meeting now. We do that all the time with work studies and and things like that. Um, so the reason why we did it the way we did is because the city um was involving Kay and Brad's districts. Um, and you know, and and just being conscious of everybody else's um schedules, I mean. This is something we've been talking about for a long time. It just came at the last minute that I'm, that they agreed that they would do it, really that up until. What, a week ago, Kay, like, they were not willing to do this. They were going to. Transfer this to the county and they.
Well, it sounds like a fair agreement.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, the time was the element here. I mean, it wasn't really, it just really wasn't time to do a full. Meeting, I mean, they just had their, they had their city meeting that Wednesday, we had a meeting Friday.
Well, and they only had one city council member too.
That was the other thing, was they weren't coming in quorum either, so um. You know, in in the future, I'll I'll poll the whole council, if you guys would prefer that, I just figured everybody else had enough going on, and I had brought this up at our council meeting. That it was, we were, you know, talking about it, and so. I apologize if.
No, there's no need for apology, I just, I I had made concern that I wanted to be involved in it and I wasn't contacted, but that's, I, that's fine. I just. I'm I'm, I think it's a good proposal, I just wanted to kind of, because I did specifically say to contact. But.
Understood, sorry, it was my fault. I thought, I thought when we were in our meeting that we talked about Brad Kay doing it and I was kind of by default.
You brought up the lead to go.
My fault, Howard, sorry. Anything else, anything from the public?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
How a motion is theirs, I think.